Or you start out with the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the heart of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay. Okay, all right.
Is there a agenda?
I don't think so.
I don't think we have one, so.
Welcome to our public hearing here for the 2024 budget. Yeah, I think, I don't know that it's on. There's no app, there's no speaker system in here. This is just for recording. So, but anyway, this is for the 2024 budget. Thank you for coming. We have a lot of our staff downstairs in another room. I think we've run out of room up here. I guess if anybody else that shows up will just have to wait in the hallways. I don't think anybody wants to.
There's overflow downstairs and then we'll bring them up if.
Oh, we do have some overflow downstairs, so if you want to sit downstairs and watch on the TV, you can do that.
And you can come up for your comment.
And then later on, we have public comment. You can come on up when we call your name. We're going to have a couple people speak first. Well, let me introduce those up here. We have Cindy Beck. She's our city clerk.
County clerk.
What?
County clerk.
County clerk, I'm sorry.
That's all right. That's all right.
I'm sorry.
Brenda doesn't mind.
And we have Jim Crow, our county attorney on the far right. And on my immediate left is Commissioner Aaron Mays. And on my immediate right is Commissioner Kevin Cook, and I'm Bill Rippon. And we're going to start off tonight with our county appraiser. Steve Baum is going to give a presentation on how appraisals work and how that tall that, how all that functions. So Steve, why don't you start us off?
Good evening. I am Steve Baum. I am your county appraiser. I'm going to try and talk loud enough for everybody to hear me. I'm just going to go over role and requirements of the appraiser in this process. Okay, so Article 11, Section 1 of Kansas Constitution instructs the legislator to provide a uniform and equal basis evaluation and rate of taxation. The appraiser's office was created and is directed by Kansas statute. Almost every aspect of our office is driven by statute and reviewed by our oversight agency, the property valuation division of the Department of Revenue. All of these statutes are important. Interest of time, I'll highlight a few of them. 79501 says that all property must be appraised at fair market value with some exceptions like agricultural use. And then KSA 79503A provides that definition of fair market value. And that's the amount of terms of money that a well-informed buyer is justified in paying a well-informed seller in an open and competitive market, assuming no undue compulsion. And then 791401 establishes property valuation division as our oversight agency. We are held to the highest standards of accuracy and compliance by our property valuation division. They review most of our processes and the results are measured through procedural and statistical compliance. Part of that is the sales ratio studies. This measures, uses property that is sold after our valuation date to measure how our appraisals are performing. And so a median ratio below 100 would indicate our appraisals are generally low. A median ratio above 100 would indicate our appraisals are generally higher than the sale prices. So the compliance standards require a median ratio between 90 and 110. The latest completed sales ratio study by PVD concluded a median ratio of 91.3 for residential and 92.6 for commercial. And I would just note that year over year, our office has maintained near perfect compliance report ratings. We employ a mass appraisal technique, which is valuing the universe of properties as a specified date using standardized procedures with statistical testing. We build appraisal models to assist in the valuation of all property, but each property is appraised based on its own individual, unique characteristics. We're required to visually inspect every property at least once every six years. However, we're out there more often. If a property sells, has a building permit, the owner requests us to come out, or we have a reason to believe there's some change made to the property. We review and analyze every cell that occurs in Shawnee County. That includes a full exterior onsite inspection of every market arms length transaction. And while we measure and inspect each property, we do not get to go inside every home. Therefore, unless we find out differently, we have to assume that the interior quality and condition is similar to the exterior. For the most part, this is usually the case. And if it's not, we are generally notified or need to be notified. The models are developed for each market area using sales data, cost data, rent information, income and expense information to reflect what's occurring in the market. Using property characteristics in this process allows for extracting important factors to allow adjustments to be made between the subject property and its comparable properties. Highlighting again the importance of sales transactions, they are used in all three approaches to value and analysis and the statistical testing. So we are responsible for appraising over 76,500 parcels of real estate annually with an effective date of January 1st. So every year, we reappraise. We may not inspect every year, but we are reappraising every year with new information, new data, new sales information. So the appraised value that we look to obtain is the market value that each property should be able to sell for in an open and competitive market. Some people have commented to us that we raise values for the purpose of increasing taxes. That's, that's really not the case. I mean, I understand why you feel that way. But our office was not established to generate tax revenue, but to assure fair distribution of the total tax base. So last couple of years, our market has been pretty intense. We've been fielding a lot of phone calls. Values have been historically increasing over the last couple of years. So I'd like to go over some of the information, some of the indicators that we're seeing in the market. Average and median sale prices, residential sale prices have been increasing at higher rates than the previous normal years. Due in part to near record low inventory of available homes on the market. We finished this year with less than a month's worth of supply. Typical supply is considered four to six months in a balanced market. And you can see from this graph that we've been below that for the last several years. Mortgage rates had been historically low in the prior years, feeding the buying frenzy. I believe this increase in rates have slowed the market appreciation from what it could have been, considering our supply issues. But if you look at the mortgage rates over the last 50 years, 6.5% interest really doesn't seem that extreme, even though it's a significant increase, significant increase from the prior years. Some additional charts show there are a number of total sales falling this last year, but pretty much in line with the prior five. In addition, new home permits are not increasing, which is contributing to some of our supply issues. Our total Shawnee County real estate appraised value over the last five years. This year's appraised value increased 12.83% over the prior year. Commercial values, county overall, increased on average 7.4. That's including new construction. Residential market values, 13.8. That does include apartments in that 13.8 number. Then the total overall was a 12.8% increase. So as we were beginning to finalize our values for 2023, there were talks of pending recession and market fears. So I surveyed our surrounding counties to see what their analysis were telling them. And these results are surprisingly fairly uniform. Each of these counties do their independent studies from us. They're coming up with similar type numbers. Shawnee County, we had general increases of 7 to 15%. Douglas County had 5 to 15. Leavenworth and Wyandotte had 10 to 15, and Johnson had 10 to 21. You can see from these numbers that it's, it's not just us. So when we look at the total real estate appraised value broken out by classification, residential classification makes up the majority of it at 67.4%. Commercial's carrying 13%. Exempt property is 16% of the total appraised value. A more important number that reflects only the taxable property value is the assessed value. You can see that commercial now makes up 28.3% of the total value. And residential is still carrying 67.3% of that. Overall, the assessed value was an 11.76% increase over the prior year. Total assessed value for real estate. So as a lot of you may know, there is an appeal process for anyone that feels their appraised value is incorrect. We've passed the first appeal level, which is the informal equalization level. And you have 30 days from the date we sent out the notice in March, March 1st, to make that appeal. If you miss that, you can pay your taxes under protest, either the first half or the second half. You can only do one of those options. So you can either appeal at the informal level, the equalization level, when you get your notice, or make a payment under protest. And there's a form for that. It's not super difficult, but if you have any questions at all about how to maneuver through the process, feel free to give our office a call and we can help guide you through that. And then if you get your results from the hearing with us, it's not over. You can appeal that on to the Board of Tax Appeals. There's a small claims division for residential property that you can go to, and these are third-party people that will hear the appeal. And this is for value. Taxes aren't dealt with at this level. It's, is, would your house be able to sell for this? Or would your commercial building be able to sell for what we have it appraised for? And this chart is showing the number of informal hearings, is a value notice hearings that we've had over the last so many years, quite a few. I don't, don't know if you all can read that from back there, but this latest year, the 1904, that high mark is 2022. That's 1904 hearings. It's more than double the prior years. 2023 didn't make it on this chart yet, but it's a little higher still because we had another larger increase in values for 2023. But that number was about 2,300. And then that orange line running through the middle of this is the percent changed. And that number hovers between 30 and 50% of the appeals that we get take some adjustment. A lot of that hat goes back to what I was saying earlier, that we don't get to see the inside of every home. So unless we know differently, we're assuming that the interior condition and quality is similar to the exterior. So the forms of taxation. Property tax is the only one that isn't come with an automatic increase. If sales increase, tax collection is an automatic increase. Income tax increases as wages rise. Property tax is truly dependent upon all of the different taxing authorities budgets. How much do the schools, cities, county, townships, et cetera, need to operate? So in this mill levy example, the budget is the tax. It's, the mill levy is calculated by dividing the budget by the assessed value. That equals the mill levy. After the total tax is set, that calculated mill levy is multiplied by each property's assessed value to get to the individual tax amount. So the budget drives the mill levy, not the mill levy necessarily determining the budget. And this is just a timeline of the property tax cycle. So our appraised valuation starts as of January 1st. We send out notices March 1st. I think the important part on here is that the taxes paid in December are based on that value that was established back as of January 1st. And then the December 2023 payment of taxes for the 2023 values is actually for the 2024 budget year. So those things are, I think, are important to note. Something else that I think is very important to note, because I have gotten complaints of us taxing elderly and, and low-income people out of their homes. These are the different property tax relief programs that are available administered through the state. Our, our county clerk's office does a very good job of assisting people filling out these forms. So if you can't get ahold of anybody at the Tax Assistance Center, we can reach out to our county clerk's office for help. New this year is the seniors and disabled veterans, and it's a refund of the increase in tax. So how do you be, your eligibility is household income less than $50,000, 65 years old, or disabled veteran. And then a base year appraised value of $350,000 or less. That number may have been increased. I'm not sure. I know they were attempting to increase a couple of the, the income threshold and the base year appraised value. So, and then I believe these slides are available out on our website. I know there's property tax relief programs we put out on our website, so if you have questions, you can look back at that. Here's our website. It's www.snco.us/ap. Most of our information is available out there to anybody that wants to go look at it. This includes a, now a tax history, which is Larry Maher Treasurer's portion of our website. But it breaks down all of the different taxing authorities and where your tax payments go on, on that document. Gives you a nice color chart to, to help visualize it. And that's, that's all I have, unless you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Steve. Betty Griner, our finance director, she wants to talk a little bit about some of this process. She'll be our next speaker.
Good evening. I was just going to go have a, give you a summary of our budget process and the process that we've gone to to get to this point where we are tonight. In June, each of the departments submitted a budget request to the finance department. Then in July, we had the commission held budget hearings with each and every department and nonprofit that were asking for budgeted money. Let me start out, I should have started out with this too. This is just a budget hearing for our general fund. This does not include any other funds. This is just for our general fund and our special liability fund, because those are the only two levied funds that the county has. Those budget hearings that we had in July, they were live streamed, they were recorded. They're now available on the Shawnee County Commission webpage and also on YouTube. Then August 3rd through the 17th, the commission had discussions at public commission meetings to develop a preliminary budget, which is what you have a copy of tonight. This is not a final budget. No final budget can be approved until after the public hearing, which is what we're at tonight. And during this preliminary budget discussions, the commissioners discussed each and every single line of that, each department or any nonprofits that are requesting it. And so, and some of, some of the times, for quite a few of these different ones, they asked for more information or had additional questions that then we came back at the next meeting and answered those questions for them. So there was significant amount of discussion during this preliminary budget process. So the handout you have tonight, it is a compilation of all the requests, which totaled the $142,389,715. There's a category that shows the, the different, there's a column, I'm sorry, that shows the different categories. Like you'll see at the top is law enforcement. That category includes the counselor's office, community corrections, the Department of Corrections, and such. And it shows a total for that law enforcement category. The next column there is, are the 24, the 2024 budget requests. Those are the requests from all the different departments or organizations. The next column are commission adjustments. These are the adjustments that the commissioners made in coming up with this preliminary budget. And then of course, the last column is the preliminary budget. You'll see at the bottom, the preliminary budget number is $140,760,656. Then we take that number, we subtract from it all the non-levy revenue that the county receives. We receive, you know, fees for parks and rec and fees for a lot of, a lot of different items. So we subtract that. We have to factor in the neighborhood revitalization rebates. We have to factor in expected tax delinquencies. So I'm using a number of 2% for tax delinquencies. And then that is how I come up with an amount, an estimated mill levy. Now I will specify that this is an estimate. As Steve just went over, we have, we get a preliminary appraised value and assessed value in June. But the final assessed valuation does not come out until November. So the county clerk actually sets that mill levy based on the budget amount and that final assessed valuation. So as you will see, the estimated mill levy for this preliminary budget would be 49.312. That is a reduction from the 23 mill levy, which was 49.861. No final budget can be approved until after the public hearing. We've had, even though the rules changed a little bit a couple of years ago, we have always had a budget hearing every single year, so that is not new to us. We've always had one. So the first opportunity that the commission would have to approve a budget for 2024 would be this Thursday at their regularly scheduled Board of County Commissioners meeting. And then, like I said, excuse me, like I said before, and then in November is when the county clerk will actually set the final mill levy. Any questions for me?
Betty, just to recap, this preliminary budget that was presented tonight for the public to consider, it is less than the current mill levy by about 1.5%.
But, yes. Well, it's, it's, I'm not sure of the percentage, but it is less by about a half, a little more than a half a mill.
I remember that we discussed 1.5 at last Thursday's meeting.
Okay.
Good. And then the, again, the final value was set by the county clerk.
Yes.
But the county commission still could take into account the public's comments tonight and make adjustments to this item. Nothing is set in stone yet.
Of course. And in fact, that's why, you know, it cannot be adopted until after the public hearing.
Now, I know that there's some people here that are concerned about where the new debt, because the county did take out some debt last year to do some improvements to parks and recreation. Is that part of this budget?
The debt service for that is, yes.
But where, how the money spent?
But we also have, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but we also have debt service that pays off too. So if I, we actually had a decrease in our debt service for this 2024 budget. I believe it was over $1 million in decrease. So even though we had new debt coming on, we also had old debt that we had paid off.
It was a decrease of $1,518,456. But as to where that debt is going to be spent, that new debt, that's not part of this budget. For example, at the Oakland Pool, or at Family Park, or at Dornwood, wherever it may be.
No, the debt service will be part of this. The expenditures will be separate from this. We have, the proceeds from the bonds go to a trustee, and those expenses are paid from that trustee. The part the county will pay on an ongoing basis is the debt service.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Betty? You know, I, I just want to say a few things before we get into public comment. You know, we're required by the state to do a lot of different things. We're required to have a sheriff's department, an election office, the register of deeds, a treasurer, health department. It goes on and on. On probably 90% of what we do is required by the state. And a lot of our budget is, is salaries. And as you know, salaries have gone up. And everywhere you go, you see help wanted posters in every window. We're, we're not just competing with other government agencies. We're competing with the private sector as well to try to retain people and attract people. We have openings right now, like almost everybody. So that's, that's something we've had to deal with. It's just like people's houses going up. Salaries have had to go up. It's just part of the inflation that we're living through right now. Also, I think a lot of you are here because you got this piece of paper the other. I certainly got one, and it's confusing. Back in July, we had to make a decision if we were going to send this out or not. And basically what it does is that if there's a possibility at all that your, your tax is going to go up, we have to send this out. If we don't send this out, then we cannot raise tax. So you, what you do is you paint yourself in a corner. So yeah, you send this out, but I guarantee you, it's not going to go up. It's going to go down on the mill. But thank you, thank you for the state and the guys under the dome for, for giving us this little, this little jewel. And not only that, we've probably spent, well, last year, we spent $44,155 in postage just to send this out. And every year, you're probably going to get the same piece of paper that says, well, it might go up, but it, not necessarily. And so that's, it's, it's something that we just almost have to do. In case of some emergency, or we have to spend some money on something to keep something afloat or going, you'd be crazy not to, be foolish not to do this. You don't have to raise tax, but it just gives you that out if you need to. Okay, at this point, we, we put together a preliminary budget. And like Commissioner Cook says, it's not etched in stone. We'll listen to you tonight, and then we may make some adjustments to it. I think right now, our, our mill reduction was, what were we at? I think right now, our, our mill reduction was, what, what were we at?
About half.
About ha, almost half a mil. That's where we're sitting at right now. So, anyway, I know a lot of people are concerned about their appraised values on their homes, you know? Well, the price of homes went up like 13% one year, 12% another year, it's gone up some this year. The good news is your house is worth more. The bad news is your house is worth more when it comes to paying taxes. And we don't have control over how houses are appraised. That's set by the state. Steve went over all that, how that, how that works. And so, you know, and I've heard people say, well, I haven't made any improvements to my house. Well, nobody's made any improvements to hamburger either, and you see what, what's gone on there. Everything's gone up. So it's, it's, it's a tough environment we live in. We have to keep pace with employees. We have a lot of departments, that's, that's really their only expense is, is employees. But we have a lot of, we have a lot of departments that buy things. We're, we're major consumers in some ways. We're buying a lot of road oil, we're buying gas for sheriffs and all the other departments, we're buying equipment. And we've seen that, you know, the increase in price of everything as much as anybody. So I just want to let you know that it, the, the inflation has affected us, and none of us want to raise taxes. And so we've, we've done, we've, we've tried to hold, to hold the line. So I just wanted to let you know, we've made a good faith effort to do that. So, anyway, there, there is an appeal process that Steve went over. If you, if you don't like the way your house, but that window is closed for, for this year. But next year, you'll know that you can do something if you want to. And, yes?
Real quick, they still have an opportunity to pay their taxes under protest.
Under protest, right? Okay. So, you have that. Okay, I want to get into speakers at this point, and I want people to try to hold their comments down to about three minutes, so that we can hear as many people as we can. And the first person I have on here, Joseph Ledbetter.
Do we have a timer?
No, I'm not saying that as a joke.
I can use my watch if you want me to.
I, it doesn't work for me. No, I'm kidding. You let me know when, when you're ready.
Just a second here, I'll get it. Okay, before we do that, we need to make a, I want to make a motion to open this as a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Rippon, second, and by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries three, zero. So we are now officially opening. Joe, go ahead.
Okay. I don't want to disappoint anybody in the audience tonight, but I'm just down here to support the Parks and Rec budget. That's because I'm the vice chair of the Parks and Rec Advisory for Shawnee County. Now, Parks and Rec is, is a quality of life issue, and ask any kid, or look at any kids that's not getting any exercise. It's really part of our health, and it's all part of our overall community image. And so I, I have been on this for about six years, I've been the vice chair for two years. In looking at our budget, I didn't get to speak the other day because I just had to leave, the meeting went long. So I'll just refresh what I was going to talk about. The, the budget went up, up through inflation to about, about 1.4 million. But of, of those increases, we had to have 150,000 more for lifeguards, or we could not have opened the pools. We had to meet union increases of about 350,000, and I'm going off memory on some of this, and, because I didn't get those notes. And we had insurance increases, as have people in this audience, I understand that, of about 333,000. About a million of that increase was basically just due to things way beyond our control. The county did cut the request by $160,000, and I asked the director and other members of the advisory if that was good and fair, and they said it was, because they were cutting positions, were being hard to fill anyway. We just talked about those labor shortages, so we're going to have to do more of that labor with less labor. I do support the budget as, after the commission adjustments for the Parks and Rec. I hope you'll approve that in the next, your next time that you do take the action to vote on the budget. Is my time up?
You can take another minute, please.
Okay. I just want to say that I'm on several boards, and I, I look forward to public input at, at whichever of those hearings we have. And I know on the MTA, I pushed for a cut of $570,000, and so that's not reflected in the sheets people got, but it will be reflected down the road. There were still increases, but I won't go there because this is a county budget. I think it's great that people come out and participate in your local government, and I appreciate that we're having this hearing, and thank you for your support for Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Joe. When you, when you come up for the record, please state your name and your address, that would help us a little bit. Yeah, that's good to have. Gary Murphy? Maybe he's in the basement.
Hold on.
Oh, there he is. Yes.
He's coming up. All right. Just come up to the podium and state your name, that way our court clerk, or county clerk can take that.
Jerry Murphy. And I just want to speak on the appraisal process. I've got a number of investment properties in town. And I under, I've gained a little insight by what he said tonight, but this process seems to be a broad brush approach in applying the same increase in value to every property. And you can't really compare investment properties that are used as rentals to owner-occupied properties. They don't typically have the same amenities, they don't typically have the same level of finish. And I know there are other investment property owners in here, and it's, I think it's a well-known fact that tenants typically do not care for a property the same way an owner would. So we don't generally maintain those to the same level that an owner-occupied property is. Many of these properties that they're being compared to have been freshly refurbished, so that they'll bring top market value. And to value properties that have not had that same attention at the same as these properties that have recently sold is not a fair comparison. So I think there needs to be consider, some consideration made on these properties to differentiate between owner-occupied and tenant-occupied properties, and adjust accordingly in their At the same time, we're going to pass those increased costs on to our tenants. And many of these people that live in these properties, especially the lower-income stuff, they're already having a hard time meeting their financial obligations. And to have these increases in rent because our taxes have taken this, what seems to be an exorbitant hike, 15% on my properties, I just don't know that these people that live in some of these properties are financially able to bear that burden. So, anyway, I just think there needs to be some reevaluation of how these types of properties are, are looked at and valued. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. All right. Orville, is it Dahl or Dale?
Dale.
Dale?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Orville Dale, and say L instead of I L L E. My address, 13, 3642 Southeast Tomahawk Drive, Tecumseh. Over the last three years, well, the last two years, my property taxes have gone up over, over $1,050. With this increase, they're proposing $1,800 plus in three years. That's 30% increase. I don't think expenses have gone up 30%. We need to take a look at that, get this budget in line, I think, and get taxes in My, my only other comment is, and I, that capitalism works, socialism doesn't. Every country that's gone socialistic is in trouble. Just remember that. Thank you.
All right. Jonathan Smith?
Jonathan Smith, I live on the 2500 block of southeast Colorado. Commissioners, thank you for your time. I've been following the great work that you officials do, week after week since 2022. It may not be glamorous or exciting, oftentimes it is not, but the work that you're doing facilitates the quality of life improvements, year after year, that a citizen expects of its government. My kids would not have been able to play sports on quality fields with kids from their own town. They would have not met their teammates and made lifelong friends if not for the programs that you funded through the, through the hard work of Tim Laurent. My kids wouldn't have been able to experience the same quality of counseling and social programs through Family Services and Guidance Center if you guys, unless you guys funded it, and you did. My own prerogative of furthering recycling science and compliance wouldn't be where it is without your signatures on the contracts with waste management through the guidance of Bill Sutton. My point is, when a meaningful policy choice is made to better Shawnee County's quality of life, you three are there, standing behind it, hoping that it improves the lives of, lives of those of us living in Shawnee County. You care, I know you care, because I get to see the amount of paperwork and research that you guys do in regards to the choices you make, which is why I'm standing here, hoping that you commissioners take the foundational steps necessary in addressing a nationwide problem here in our county. Commissioner Cook, I heard your impassioned speech on July 13th, where you declared it necessary to commit $6 million toward tackling mental health, drug and alcohol counseling, and homelessness in Shawnee County. I could not agree more. I hope those weren't just words. You have the ability, as a commission, to make that into countywide policy. My ask is that you create a county fund for a subsidy toward that need counseling ser, for those that need counseling services but cannot afford them. This will benefit those amongst us that desperately need a helping hand but simply cannot afford to spend hundreds of dollars to take care of themselves. It should be targeted at the impoverished, the unhoused, and those of us afflicted with addiction. These communities would gain the most from these necessary services. This may also stimulate the growth of counseling services to travel to Shawnee County, because we know we are struggling with, with a mental health crisis nationwide, but there is no reason that Shawnee County can't make the forward-thinking steps to bring those services here first. We have so many enormous problems to tackle from county to country, but this is something we can do, that we can afford to do, that we know would bring positive, meaningful, substantive help to change our communities. I don't care what the number is that you attach to the funding, I'll let your mathematicians, accountants, and staff work out the details, but you know where to start. I only pray that you make it happen for the good of all of us here in Shawnee County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Barb Blomack?
Barbara Blomack?
Your address?
806 Southeast 44 Terrace. I too wanted to speak to the appraisal process, especially for those of us that live on social security. It's getting more and more difficult for us to live. I, I feel like it's pointed to getting the elderly out of their homes and onto the street. I don't know what can be done about it. I understand what you said about the appraisal process. I have appealed every year. It has done me no good to appeal. So I just wanted to speak for those people on social security that it's getting really hard. We have a choice. We pay our taxes, or we eat. One of the two. And that's all I have to say about that. And thank you for listening.
Thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Ms. Blomack. Could I?
Yes.
So just to speak to that real quick, and I certainly understand, there are some property tax relief programs for seniors that are available. He briefly mentioned it, but there's one that was passed, I think it was actually two years ago and implemented this last year, that with, without knowing your financial situation, if you're, I believe it's, if you're under $50,000 in annual income and your home is worth less than $350,000, any increase in taxes are forgiven if you apply for this program. And so I think a lot of people over 65 that are on social security will be eligible for that savings program. And so I think a lot of people don't know that it exists, and so if you'd like resources to direct you to that, and there's also the homestead programs that have been for years, but that is an option as well, so if, the Appraiser's Office, I believe, has that on their website, and then Department of Revenue also does too. So, or you can just call it, and they'll give you the information too.
Okay. All right. Our next speaker's Rocky Bartlow.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate the appraisal director's explanation. I'm fully convinced that my appraisal is right, and I think that's the frustration of, of most of us when we go to, to try to appeal them, is that they are right. They've done their work, and they are right. The problem is, is that the price of houses go up, and I'm thrilled that my neighbors and friends think my house is worth, you know, 50, 60% more than it was when I bought it a few years ago in 2015. But the problem is, the only way for me to, to receive any benefit from that is to sell the house. And I don't want to sell the house. I plan on being carried out in a body bag. I, I'm retired, and that's the last house I plan on buying. And we worked hard during our working years to pay off all of our debt, our cars, our houses, everything, and get to a place where we didn't, we could hedge and control the expenses we had, because we do have a limited budget now that I'm retired and we're living on a lesser income. So I appreciate the fact that the appraisers are probably right. They do their, they do their work, they figure it out, and, and the, the information they have jives with what crazy people are paying for houses these days. I wouldn't pay that much for my house, but somebody would, so, okay. But once again, I can't see that unless I sell the property. And I'm not planning on selling the property. So like Forrest Gump, I'm not a very smart guy, but I've realized over the years, when I pay more for taxes, that my taxes are going up, whatever the formula is. And I realize that, that county government is strapped in certain ways by requirements of federal and state governments, and so that, that limits some of the things you can do. But the fact is, those of us that are living on an income that's not changing much are required to live within our means, and if something has to go, something has to go. And I don't want anything that we're getting to have to go, but the fact is, when it goes up each year to a person that's paying, basically to rent their house from the government, we, we need to say, stop somewhere. You know, something has to stop. And we're just appealing to you to say, hey, hear our voice, and, and, and try to help us. I do appreciate what you do, I know it's a hard job, and we just want you to know that, that we're suffering out here. And, and as far as getting money from the government, if you're an elderly person, well, that's great, but I hate to have to go beg to the government to give me money from somebody else, because those are tax funds. Those don't, those aren't funny money, those are money that come from other people to help me to pay my taxes. And so I would rather not have to do that to somebody else, and in fact, I'm not going to do it, I'm, I've got the income, I don't have to. But that now makes me one of those people that are paying taxes to help somebody else, because the government has outtaxed them and, from their house. So, once again, thank you, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Sorry, I did state my name, Rocky Bartlow, and I live at 125 Northwest Cortland Avenue. Thank you.
Okay. Mary Isley?
Thanks for the opportunity. I'm afraid he said just what I wanted to say, so there's no need repeating, except one thing I would say, that I agree that it, those who are about to retire are going to be put out on the street because of how much we're going to have to pay. to be put out on the street because of how much we're going to have to pay if it keeps going up all the time. Thank you.
Richard, looks like your ink pen was, let's see, June?
Johnson, maybe?
Might be Johnson. Is there a Richard?
Looks like it starts with a J. Johansson?
Or is that Ricard?
Anybody here called Richard?
Is there a Richard here?[639.11][639.11](LAUGHTER).
Richard, what's the last name?
Barn Grover.
Nope.
You're on the back, yeah? He's on the back.
You're on the back.[649.91][649.91](LAUGHTER). There's another one?
Is there another Richard?
Let's let him talk then.
I'm Richard Barn Grover. I live on Southwest Jordan Road, and I want to address this to Commissioner Mays. I see on here we have a budget for the sheriff of an additional $200,000. That's good, except for one thing. We are posted on Jordan Road what the speed limit is, and do you think that your sheriff's department does anything to enforce it? No, they don't. I have talked to them, they said we don't have time, and we don't have radar. I would appreciate it if they'd get something done down there. Thank you.[698.23][698.23](APPLAUSE).
I would say, I believe it's representatives from the sheriff's department here, and he is an elected official, so we cannot tell him what to do, but we will certainly send your words on. And I hope the folks in the back there were listening, so, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. Terry Roberts, 4925 Southwest Cedar Crest Road. First, I want to thank you for your public service. I don't think I could say it as eloquently as Mr. Smith did in his statements about your commitment, because I do watch your Monday morning meetings, and sometimes I'm here for your Thursday morning meetings, and I know that you're highly committed to trying to do what's best for Shawnee County citizens, and I appreciate it. I'm going to speak to three budgets. First, the Vallejo budget. The Vallejo budget of $2,250,000, $2,250,000 certainly is needed. This post-pandemic statistics indicate that our depression of our children and of our adults and what we call adjustment disorder is unfortunately very high, in addition to what we all know is the increase in drug use and alcohol use, and some of the homeless issues and mental health issues that are affecting our county. So, Vallejo's budget is important to serving the citizens of our county. The second thing I want to talk about, I'm a registered nurse, and I want to talk about the Health Department funding. The agency has continued their services post-pandemic, playing catch-up in areas that are full, that are behind, that became behind because of the pandemic. For example, immunizations, okay? Children did not get taken to the Health Department to get their immunization, so they now have to play catch-up. And pursuant to what Commissioner Rippon said, they're also suffering from a shortage of registered nurses, as are hospitals and home health agencies throughout, not only this country, our county, but the country. So, I appreciate your continued support for funding their essential public health services. Public health gained significant recognition since March of 2020 with the pandemic response. And thirdly, I too serve on the Shawnee County Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. I want to thank you for funding the Parks and Rec at $18,455,000. Pursuant to the agreement with the City of Topeka, the advisory committee reviewed and approved the Shawnee County Parks and Rec budget that was submitted to you all. Additionally, I want to reaffirm that the Gage Park sales tax, while not part of tonight's hearing, does not permit the supplanting of operation funds for Gage Park. We are proud of our improvements that we have made in the parks in the past two years, and I'm particularly pleased with the changes that Tim Laurent has really identified in our ADA compliance and made changes to try and make it more available to those who are disabled. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. All right.
Hello. I am Angela Lake. I am with TBSA, Topeka Baseball and Softball Association. I'm Dornwood. I know we are not talking about how money is getting spent tonight at this meeting, but I just wanted to make sure that Dornwood is in your guys' mind and does not forgot. We were here last year, seeing where improvements that was told to us that would happen eight years ago. And we have not seen, last year, at this meeting, they said there was going to be some money. We have not seen any results. When would the meeting be held to decide where these funds, where those extra funds would go? We, also at Dornwood, we have increased our participation out there a lot. We had 45 teams. We had 10 T-ball teams this year.
Just to let those know, to answer Angela's question, Shawnee County took out $10 million in new debt in this last year. That new debt was for Parks and Recreation items. The items that we have established, at least budgets, we haven't spent any of the money yet, but established budgets to look for the replacement of the pool in Oakland, to address the start of a new park at 29th and Urish, Family Park, to add more pickleball and other amenities that location, but also looking at the Dornwood to finish replacing and renovating the ball diamonds and softball diamonds and Dornwood, and then also adding a reception hall in Ward Mead Park. And I think that those are all still progr, projects that are under the works. No action has been finalized, and again, the public always has the ability to add input to those and will be advised of when those come forward. So, they're still in progress at this point, Angela.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, my name's Howard Hogan. I live at 6235 Southeast US 40. I just wanted to stand up and say I'm opposed to any increase. I am also, like the first gentleman spoke, a rental property owner. Some of the tenants have a very hard time just paying their rent as it is. An increase in property taxes will typically be passed on to them. And the other thing I was going to say was, in looking at your budget, I would encourage the commissioners to go through it line by line to see if there was any other places that can be cut. In printing off the 2023 approved budget with, that also lists the 2021 budget, I do notice that there's been significant increases in certain line items. I won't necessarily go through those line items, but it looks like from 2021 to the proposed 2024 budget, over three years, that's a $26 million increase, or a 22% increase overall. I would like you to look at that over the year over year and why it has to go so fast. Thank you, that's all I had.
I just want to say, if there's anyone watching in the overflow, there've been several chairs open up, so if there's anyone down in the basement watching, I think we've got probably another eight or nine chairs open if they wanted to come up now.
Okay, thank you. Dwayne Thema, Themi? I may be pronouncing that wrong.
Dwayne Thiem, 223 Center Drive, Silver Lake. Some concerns on the appeal process and taxes. The appeal process, if you go through that, you've got to have, pardon? You've got to have the funds first, so if you can't afford the funds, then you've missed that opportunity and you can't get that back. So, my concern as far as for those that are on fixed income, low income, all those there, that you're hurting a lot of people there. It's almost kind of like the IRS, you're guilty until you're proven innocent. So, as far as on taxes go, property taxes, concern is, it's not a fair tax. It's the least fair tax of all. It's where, it doesn't matter what your ability to pay is, they give you the bill to pay, and you either pay it or you lose your property. So, the, one question I'd ask first, is that, what was last year's 23 budget? Have you got that figure?
Yeah, I probably do.
The approved budget for 2023 was $1 million.
27 million.
127 million.
And a half.
Sorry.
127 million?
127 million, 454,000.
Okay, so it's an increase from last year. So, we're all hurting here from the, four years ago, gas was under $2 a gallon, and so look at it now. And also, inflation has gone out, you know, gone mad. Housing market's gone mad, first pricing cars. We're all tightening our belts pretty tight, so we're asking the government to tighten our belt, just the same. So, as far as that, we need to survive that here, so, that's all I ask. Thank you.
Robert Williams, 3249 Southeast Shawnee Terrace. I, just a quick few questions. Who set these meetings, on these taxing authority hearings? Does anybody know?
From my, they came from my office.
Okay, because, you know, we have two going on today. I have one in my school district, so that's kind of hamstringing our ability to have a voice as a taxing, as a taxpayer, right? So...
And if they pass the, if they want to have a revenue neutral rate hearing, they have to have it in, from August 20th to September 20th. So, there's that many days, and we have 49 taxing entities in the county. So, there's, I mean, we literally cannot, there's not enough days in the week, that timeframe, so, I know, it's...
But I could find the days, if I try it hard enough. There's not been much talk about, over the last, what, five, six years, the huge increase in tax revenue that was generated on online sales tax that was imposed here. I don't hear much about that. Or the $500 million, or the $500,000 houses that are going up all over in the county. Those are all adding to the coffers, and also have an impact on our valuations, even though ours are pre-built homes. When you have a $500,000 house next door, it raises your value regardless of a few of the sales going around. And I want to talk about the subjectivity of the valuations. I did appeal my taxes at the informal level. I requested a, an in-person meeting, because I was told on the phone that they were going to be done over the phone, and it was my understanding that I had a right to have an in-person meeting. And they acquiesced and allowed that to occur. And in that meeting, I asked the question, how many times has there been an adjustment made when an appeal has taken place? And, give or take, I got a varying range here, but it was roughly between 40 to 50% of the time, the county appraiser said that they've made some sort of an adjustment. And that tells me the subjectivity of these appraisals need to be looked at a little more closely. And that's where it translates from the comps to the adjusted sales price, or the adjusted valuations, right? And a lot of the things that go into your valuation on the structure end of it are square footage and certain aspects of the home that would render a value, more or less, depending on what it entailed. The biggies are bedrooms and bathrooms, right? So, last year I appealed, fell on deaf ears, that I had a three-bedroom, one-bath house. Well, I've had a couple of contractors tell me that those were, that one of the bedrooms was non-compliant because it had a furnace in the closet in the bedroom. Last year I mentioned that and said, hey, I want to, this is not a three-bedroom, this is a two-bedroom house, logically thinking that it would be worth less in value, right? Because that's one of the indicators, or one of the factors that go into a property's valuation, right? Well, that was rejected, remained a three-bedroom home. This year, another $15,000 whatever increase to my taxes, or to my valuation, rather, peeled again. Well, they did acquiesce this time, made it a two-bedroom house, but what they did was they cherry picked five new comps to accommodate the same valuation, the same increase, as it stood prior to my appeal. So, I'm wondering, and I heard terms like algorithms and statistical data and stuff like that floating around there. It makes you want to, it makes you wonder, and they told me, well, all the properties in your neighborhood went up 15%. Makes me wonder if a person, if the computer system and the algorithms are all there, can an individual go in and say, you know, I want all of these properties in this neighborhood to go up 15%? Let's type in an algorithm and get the comps to accommodate that. If you can do it one way, I argue that you probably can do it that way as well. Not saying that they do, or not accusing anybody of any of that, not even saying that that may not be morally okay or proper. I don't know, it just seems like, in my instant, in my situation, they switched up comps to accommodate the valuation that they wanted, right? And I can show you numerous property, wildly inaccurate evaluations in my own neighborhood, and I brought these there too. Nonetheless, I mean, that's, and I mentioned to the appraiser that these kind of predatory valuations are going to cause activism, they're going to create activism, and I believe we see that here today. And I mentioned it last time I spoke about this, that we need to elect our appraisers, and I appreciate whichever county commissioner directed me to the State House, told me that's where I need to talk about that. But you are our advocates too. We vote for you, we are your constituents, right? You could have a voice for us as well on that front, right? You know? These valuations are speculations, you know? There's no guarantee that the value that they place, they do it on sales comps, and I understand a lot of that's state requirements and all that, you know? And that's something that, if you hear my voice, maybe we need to go to the state level and make some of those changes, and probably with the agreement of the appraiser and some of the elected officials here, they would probably be okay with that. But we don't hear a lot, I heard the last gentleman, we don't hear a lot here about downsizing, about cutting. It's all about, oh, things cost more, so we need to charge you more. Well, you know what? When things cost too much for me, I simply don't buy them.[1768.33][1768.33](APPLAUSE). You and every one of these taxing authorities have a fiduciary responsibility to the people who you take money from, and that should be paramount to your decisions, is limiting the expenses. And let me ask, if anybody, do you feel like the quality of life here is good? Do you feel like the infrastructure and the roads are appropriate for the amount of money? that we're taking in? I, it's like driving...
County roads, not city roads.
County roads too. I can, I can take, I can take you in, you know, and maybe...
We have no control over the city roads.
We don't take care of those. We don't take care of state highways.
Can we, am I still on, or do I pause?
Yes.
The time, okay. No, I'm directing this at the county. Maybe there needs to be a collaborative effort like there was with the parks merging, you know, the county coming in and taking over. Maybe there needs to be a cooperative effort between city and county to, but there are a number of roads in the county too that are, are subpar, you know?
I think you'll find most of those are probably township roads. Their, our roads are pretty much shaped.
Well, and we can't, we can't, we can't harp only on this taxing authority. We do have many others that, there's a lot of feather bedding going on in those departments as well, in those agencies that we maybe need to get a handle on. But, so, I would, I would like to, here's, I'll finish up with this. Would you object, not that I think you would have the authority to stop it, but would you object to a citizen review board that focuses on budget reduction for each of your departments? Not an advisory board that has a special interest in that, in that department, wanting to grow it or wanting to, you know, fine tune? But a citizen review board specifically focused on budget reduction. What's your thoughts on that? You don't have the authority to stop us through FOIA. We could do it on our own, but would you support that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You're available at any point. You're all available. Every part of our budget is published online. This is your 2024 budget that's sitting on this counter right here. Every single budget hearing is recorded and placed on the internet, on YouTube, for you to review when it's available to you. You have the ability to go down to the library, if you don't have a computer, to look at it when it's available to you. And yes, we want to have citizen input. If you see an area that we can cut back on, and if we're missing something, please, reach out to us. If there's a way to save a buck, if there's a way to consolidate services, if there's a way to have a better product put out by Shawnee County, we want to do that.
Here, here, thank you. We heard, if a group comes to you and claims to be a citizen reviewer, this is our proposals. How likely, historically, from a historical context, from your past votes and scrutinies, what's the likelihood that those recommendations would be adhered to?
Those comments have always had impacts on me.
Have they? Like tonight, this?
Yes.
So we should expect to see something a little different here than based on, based on the comments tonight?
It's always possible.
Okay. And lastly, and I'll get out of your hair, I don't, I didn't hear anything about, I'm a little confused about the revenue neutral. What is, is that the best-case scenario for the taxpayers? If you stick with that, we don't, that's the best we're going to get? Or what is that? Because it wasn't discussed, or maybe I missed it.
So, I don't know if I'm an expert on it, but...
Is somebody in the room that's an employee and expert?
Yeah, the revenue neutral rate is basically if we adopted the exact same budget as last year.
Okay.
So because of the timing of when we have to have those mailers sent out, the number that's sent out by all of the taxing entities that you see on that is typically going to be a worst-case scenario. So those are all of the...
On the proposed or the...
The proposed budget that's on there is more than what our actual budget will be.
Okay.
And the amount on there, we have already cut it by 1.6 million dollars. So...
On the proposed, not the revenue?
From the proposed budget.
Neutral.
But the revenue neutral rate would be that if we had adopted basically the exact same budget as we did last year.
Okay.
Without any...
So that would be basically adopting a budget that offers really no cuts, just keeps everything status quo?
Oh, I think it would have to have cuts.
Have to have cuts.
So, I mean, just, just as a very easy example, is our, our insurance countywide...
Yeah, yeah.
In January, the first month of the year, went up twenty percent, over a million dollars. And we really don't have a choice in that.
Yeah, I understand.
What happened is all these insurers just stopped covering municipalities, and so our options dwindled. We raised our deductibles. We're now exploring, looking into a new type of insurance and self-insuring our property. But we didn't have any control of it.
Sure.
I mean, we were over budget on pretty much day one.
Yeah. See, that's scary to me when a city, when a county official says you're over budget from day one. Well, then let's get under budget. Let's downsize. Let's cut expenditures.
And we have, I think we're on budget now, but...
Okay.
I mean, we started off on the wrong foot, I would say.
Sure. And thank you for your time. I won't take anymore.
Chrissy Bowles?
No, my comments have been...
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Or is that Marcia?
Marcia.
Marcia.
Yep.
I couldn't read it here.
Hi, my name is Marcia Gutierrez, 2325 Southwest Indian Trail. And I'm here, like many others, in protest of the proposed property tax increase. I myself just recently retired, like most of the people in my neighborhood, and I'd like to keep my neighborhood safe with the people that are there. And I hate to see any of my neighbors or myself be taxed out of my home. So I would just ask for your consideration for all of us that are on fixed incomes and retired when you vote on the budget. Thank you for your time.
Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Lenell Griffith, I believe you have the spelling, 131 Southwest Greenwood Avenue. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. No. Okay. All right. Well, I'm just coming as a citizen with my humble perspective here and letting you all know, like I think many of you in this room, if you can't afford something, do you buy it? If I can't afford something, I can't buy it. I have to make decisions in my personal budget, like I've heard from so many of you that are within my personal budget. And sometimes I just can't afford wonderful things that I want. And many of the things in proposed budgets are wonderful things, but we have to come together and decide what are the core functions of government. I mean, our law enforcement, our public works, we can't do without that. That's not the private sector. We need those. But some of the wonderful things, we're telling you, we can't afford it. How many in this room can't afford the increases? I mean, it, maybe it affects the Christmas gifts that we can give. Maybe it affects, affects the food on the table. Maybe it affects the ability to keep our homes, even the homes that we've paid off. It's hard to budget, like, budget these unknown increases sometimes. So we're coming to you and saying, please consider the citizens' perspective and saying, times are tough, gas, groceries, maybe utilities going up too. I mean, times are tough and we need you to represent us. And we are saying, lot of good programs going on, however, we just can't afford it, and it hurts. So please represent us well in considering that, and don't tax us out of our homes. I'll close by saying, one of the greatest things about living in Shawnee County is the cost of living. We are shooting ourselves in the foot if we tax ourselves out of our property. We just can't do that. We're the, we're the heartland, and we can do things well, and the citizens are giving you their voice and fervently, prayerfully, humbly ask you to hear us. Thank you.
Sure, Sanora? Sanora Lassetti? Can you read that? Sandra?
Sandra.
That's Sandra Lassiter? Okay. Oh, there you are. Sorry.
...to pronounce my name, Bill. However, the unfortunate thing is that I signed that thinking I was signing a sign-in sheet, and she says, that's for those supposed to speak. I thought, oh, no, not again. But I just want to commend you on what you're doing, and I'm standing for Colley Creek area because we do not want to see an increase in our taxes. Just that simple. And it's been redundant, and everything's been well said, and I've gotten a lot of information tonight. And Bill, I expect you to be able to pronounce my name. If not, you call me Ms. Cheerios.
You know, I'm going to give up.
It's not my best writing, but I'm a principal and I expect it to be excellent. At the end of the day, I don't really have to do...
At the end of the, end of the evening, we're going to have a penmanship class for all of you that signed up tonight. Every one of you.
I read it just fine.
Okay. I couldn't read it. Anyway, Alan...
Ryan.
Right, yeah.
Did you get that, Cynthia?
I got that for you, Alan.
Alan Ryblin, I live at 4920 Northwest Landon Road. I am a Monocan Township trustee, so Bill, I got your number for what you said earlier. Talking about our roads, we have the best in the county. All right, now that I said that, got that out of the way. First of all, I want to clarify a couple of things. The R and R started because the state passed a law because they wanted us as citizens, and I'm a township trustee, so I don't completely understand it yet, and I deal with it for three years now. And I understand, guys, it's tough. I appreciate what you do because you're not a volunteer like me, but anyway. But anyway, the R and R is tough because what it basically is saying is, if we don't keep it exactly where it was last year, if we, and if the housing appraisers even go up, that gives us more money. We can't even get that. So does that make sense, that the R and R has to stay exactly the same amount as we have last year? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if the appraisers go up and there's more money coming in, we as a township would not even get that money. So then, of course, as a township, we want it because then they don't get it. Okay, so, does that make more sense as an R and R? A little bit, maybe? Okay. All right. Where's the money go?
It's confusing.
Well, you got a whole list, but anyway. I want to get a couple of things. So first of all, to the financial gal, I'm looking at that list that says commission adjustments. The way I understand that is, those are reduction based upon fees and services. No?
Those are reductions that the commission made.
Okay, so where does, where does it come in where you charge people to get into the pool? Where does it come in where you charge people to come to the parks? Where does all that money come from? Where's, where's that money at? So that's, if I may...
That's the difference between the budget amount and the amount we will levy.
So you've already taken it out before you made the budget? Okay. So then my next scenario is, you say, where's the money to be made? Right there. I'm going to suggest you charge more. We as Shawnee County don't want to pay for all these projects that we don't use. I'm an ag guy. I'm out in agriculture place. I ain't getting none of it. You guys are continuing to build parks, you're continuing to beautify them with flowers and trees. They look good. Not complaining about it. You put an astral turf in, it costs a fortune. They look good. I'm not knocking that they don't look good. You guys have done good. But why am I getting charged for something I don't ever use? I understand there's a lot of people in here probably using them, and I think they're good for your kids to keep them out of trouble because there's nothing else for them to do. Send them to my place, I'll put them to work throwing hay bales. Anyway, I'm just saying, there's places to cut. Just charge more for those using them. Why should I pay for someone using them? I think that's a complaint of a lot of us here. We just don't want to see increase no more. We're hurting out here. We've all been charged an extra thirty percent this year, starting in 2020, and everything started skyrocketing. And you guys feel it too. You're citizens, just like me. So we're just tired of the way the money's being taken from us when we have no say in it. Ultimately, we have no say. You guys do. We can come here and say, we'd like to see you reduce it, but ultimately, it's up to you three guys sitting on that bench to decide what you're going to cut, what can be done away with. I see on here, I've probably taken more time, Safe Streets, $20,000. I would think that our streets are more important than $20,000. I don't even know what that goes for. Kent? Kevin, I mean?
So...
Crime reduction.
You're going to throw that at me again? I don't want to see that.
The funding request, since the organization's inception since 1995, Safe Streets program has evolved and changed in terms of funding, number of employees, and range of activities. And they have focused more on prevention education, the relationship for crime prevention, working to engage youth in, on keeping them out of trouble, and to have the continued support of the prevention and abuse prevention services. And this goes to other Safe Streets programs. This goes to your National Night Out. If any of you had National Night Out last weekend, that was put on by Safe Streets.
So that job must be volunteered because there's no way you're doing that with $20,000.
No, that's one part.
Huh?
That's one part of their total budget. So this is not the entire budget of Safe Streets. This is an allocation from Shawnee County to Safe Streets.
Okay, that makes more sense.
Just in the same way, we don't fully fund Valeo.
Yeah, right.
And under Mental Health, that covers family service and guidance, that covers breakthrough house, and other entities.
So I would suggest, don't, decrease the taxes, keep them where they were last year. I'm good with that. So does that, does that mean you're going to have to cut a bunch? Yeah, it's about, what, 13 million is what I came up with. So you're going to have to increase fees. You're going to have to make it up somewhere. I get it. It's because I have to do the same thing in my township. I'm against taxes all the way and the way they're, the way they're taking. Property tax is the most vile tax there is. I'm going to say it every year I come up here because it is. Our founding fathers never wanted property tax. Sales tax, and that ain't your job, I understand, it's the state's job, but I'm asking you to talk to somebody at the state. They're going to listen to you.
Mr. May?
Go ahead.
I agree with you. I agree with you, and I'm glad you brought it up because we actually don't receive sales tax for our general fund. We are, our general fund is funded almost exclusively by property taxes.
Yeah, I know.
And since you said that, the state of Kansas actually has two laws on the books for lowering property tax. And it started in the 1970s when counties gave up the ability to tax tobacco and alcohol. There was a negotiation where that money, portion of the state's sales tax, was going to come back to local governments. There's two, two laws on the books. One is called the Local Ad Valorem Tax Reduction Fund.
You know the bill number?
I've got the laws right here.
Okay.
The other is called the County and City Revenue Sharing Fund. The state decided they are no longer funding those. This happened several years ago. We figured out that if the state of Kansas were to fund those two programs, it would bring in approximately 8.2 million dollars to Shawnee County. And that does not include the city of Topeka's share. If we were to take that money, if the state of Kansas would give it to us, it would reduce our mill levy by about four or five mills, which would get us to really about where the revenue neutral rate is. The state of Kansas has not funded that. They don't plan on funding it next year either. Last I checked, the state of Kansas had about a $4 billion surplus this year. We don't get sales tax revenue. You, somebody earlier had mentioned the online sales tax. That online sales tax was a windfall for the state of Kansas, but we did not see a penny of it. We, we do have the...
So they are working on it, is what you're saying?
I don't know that they're working on it at all.
So we need to contact our representatives?
I would say, contact your state representatives and your senators.
Because sales tax is a better form.
You can charge 1% for the county and you're choosing not to do that on sales tax.
We would have to have that approved by the voters.
Why does county tax differ from county to county?
If you're gonna talk, you have got to come up here. It won't get, we won't, I'm sorry. You have to, you can't just talk to the audience.
Thanks Erin, I appreciate it. And hey, I just say, try to find some places to charge the people using the services. I, I get, I mean, if you go to school and your kid needs a pair of shoes, I shouldn't have to pay for that. It's your choice to send your kid to play basketball. It's your kid to play sports. I get that part. I think they're beautiful. I think you've done a great job. I just don't use them, so why should I be funding them? I guess that's where you need to get more money coming in for your revenue. And I think people would pay that. Anyway, thanks guys.
You know, on that note, I've been involved in a number of surveys on what people would pay for. And when it comes to kids' programs, people are willing to support it 80%. On adult programs, it's just the opposite. They should pay 80%. And I've been in three or four of those surveys, they all turn out about the same, so, yeah, I see what you're saying. We have one more speaker here, Phyllis Setchell.
Hi, I'm Phyllis Setchell. I'm in Topeka's 3813 Southeast 33rd Street. I appreciate all you guys do. This is not easy and I do appreciate hearing that there is at least the decrease that you are planning for. But it looks like many people already spoke on the issues that I wanted to bring up, but it appears that we need to, the appraisals is a huge piece of this. And it doesn't seem to be something that you can do anything about. All of the things that were set up were already, like someone said, it's exactly the way it's supposed to be as it's set up to be figured. And so we need to appeal to the legislature and have the appeal talked about on this issue, on, on property tax and how we are going to go forward because it's not gonna change unless they change some of it. And it sounds like we'd appreciate talking to them about giving back what they're collecting at the state level that should come to the county. And so, this is an eye-opener today. And so, but we do want to have as much as possible revenue neutral. We have gone up and up and up and so we don't want to be taxed out of our houses. The one thing that I'm concerned about is we have so many people coming in from out of state that'll pay anything because they have, they've been, they just got, you know, a big bunch of assists selling their house in, whether it's California or wherever, they come in here with lots of money and they're raising all of the appraisals because they're buying houses and you're basing it on buying a house. And so what it sells for, that's not fair to the people who are fixed income, have already paid off their house and here we are renting from the government. That's what somebody said and I agree. So, please take in consideration what we've all said and we have a job to do at the legislature as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask if anybody else would like, we got a couple?
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's several people that look like they want to still talk.
I was gonna say, gentlemen standing up, why don't you go next?
I put my name on there out of my work land.
Oh. Was he maybe the first one?
Was that that Alan or was it?
Richard. Richard, he's Richard. He's the Richard that wasn't here.
The one who couldn't read earlier. Yeah. All right.
A lot of Richards. I'm Richard Johnson, 30.
Your address.
The original. 3536 Huxman Road. Silver Lake. Okay. Been some interesting statements tonight and mine starts out with the death of a thousand cuts. Those making those cuts are the utility companies and our state and local governments. Despite impressive financial reserves, the term inflation is the dinner bell and the taxpayers are in the main course. Especially those 65 and older on fixed incomes, the disabled 65, or under 65 on fixed incomes, which includes veterans and single parents. By local government, I'm referring to Goat Pica, downtown Topeka, Chamber of Commerce, Hartland Park, Jado, and five school districts. When you get past 65, everything you own starts wearing out. You know, your appliances, hot water heaters, HVAC, cars, home repairs, repairs that you can't do yourself anymore. And these people on the fixed incomes don't have the money. According to Wichita Sentinel, January of 2022, Kansas is rated as the firth, as fourth in the largest tax burden on people 65 and over. My home was appraised at $196,800. It's a 1,350 square foot house, one bath, and I call it a one and a half bedroom because I can touch the walls in the other bedroom, just laying down. Okay. The same year, we sold my mom and her husband's house after their death. It was a three-bedroom, two-bath house, around 1,700 square foot, two blocks from Lake Shawnee. Anyway, it got in a bidding war and we finally sold the house at $160,000. So I appealed because that house is bigger than mine and in that location of good schools and so forth. I lost. Thanks to the appraisal, my house payments went up over $100. $100 may not seem a lot, but add in all the other taxes being increased on fixed income means going without things like medication, food, other basic home supplies is what a lot of the people on the fixed incomes are coming to. I've testified in two public meetings, referenced the utilities and the inflation's there. Once the inflations get there, once they get their price, they never deceased. They stay the same and then they grow again. We have two forms of government and all are scrambling for money without any consideration on the impact it takes on its citizens. The county appraisers are out on, or are out of line, in my opinion, and discussion the issues over phone makes it easier for them as they don't see us personally. This year, they have raised the cost of license plates even. It is time to go to one form of government and it's time to audit both city and county financial transactions. The Walmart warehouse was given tax dollars to build here. Walmart makes $66,000 a minute nationally. Mars gets partial matching funds from our tax dollars for new equipment that they install. Hartland, it was a money pit. We've got a hotel we're paying for that's going to be a money pit. And, and like I said, we need to start cutting back. We have so much within the perimeters of Shawnee County and in the city limits, but it seems to keep growing and nothing seems to be getting fixed on the inside of that. One last thought, my little house that I bought was a repossession. Former owners were crack addicts. They didn't have electricity in there, so they cut a hole in the wall and put a wood burner in there and cut a hole in the ceiling. Took me two years to get rid of the mice-infested house. And so you invest a lot of money into something like that and turn around and get a cost like this, kinda upsets me. So think of all the other domino principles that take place with this and it's not just the county. It's the utility companies. It's every one of these little things. Everybody is looking at their own little thing and not realizing that that is impacting so many people that are 65 and over and on fixed incomes. Thank you for your.
Hi there, my name is Bill Welch. I live on the 100 block of Southwest Fairlon Road. And I too wanted to start by thanking you folks up here for what you do for our county. I know it's not easy work and it's not easy to sit up here before all of us hollering at you today. And I'm sure most of you probably didn't go into this, this job probably just for the money. Probably did it as a, as a public service because you care about our community. So, please take what I have to say as constructive criticism along those lines. And also forgive me if I repeat anything that's been said today. I didn't have a lot of time to put this together and I'm gonna have to kinda read it, but I'm also real involved with the real estate here in town, property management and real estate sales. I've been doing that for over 30 years, so I see what's happening on the ground a lot with tenants and things like that as well and homeowners and. So the way I see it, being in the real estate industry, the unrealistic real estate values were brought on by artificially low interest rates, which allowed people to afford more home while at the same time, a shortage of homes due to building materials going way high and builders going out of business due to lockdowns, et cetera, brought on by the plandemic, caused bidding wars on the few homes that were available. Thus, these past few years were outlier years that should be taken into account before raising taxes. Additionally, other unique factors brought on by this plandemic was that many businesses closed down, which means people lost jobs. Many people were forced to quit or got fired for refusing to take dangerous forced injections. This caused many two-income families to be forced down to only one income or possibly none. The point being that many people were struggling severely due to these abnormal events over the past few years. In addition to this, people are dealing with extremely high inflation on everything they have to buy, from food to clothes, gasoline, utilities, everything. According to the CPI inflation calculator, due to inflation compared to 2021, our dollar is now worth only about 87% of what it was worth just two years ago. From what I can see, our tax assessments on our residential properties have gone up by about 10% per year over the past two years and that's all the further I had time to go back. But this means that the tax assessments are really costing taxpayers 13% more in real dollars valued over what they paid two years ago. Even if the average taxpayer's wages had gone up by that much, which they haven't, should they be spending every extra dollar they earn on higher taxes? So what does this mean for our community's long-term health? People on fixed incomes, which is really almost everyone, but mostly the elderly and the poor, are going to have to make cuts somewhere else to pay these extra expenses, which are a lot for them. People may have to shut off willingly or unwillingly their AC during heat waves like we're having right now or during our frigid winters, which will result in heat strokes and people freezing. People will not eat as healthily or as often and will opt for cheaper, less healthy foods, which will inevitably contribute to more health costs and burden to other taxpayers. More people will get foreclosed on and possibly end up on the street, which causes a whole host of other problems. People will defer needed maintenance and improvements on their homes, which will cause the values to ultimately go down in value, creating less tax revenue in the future and these blighted and abandoned homes will cause home values around them to go down as well. The county may eventually have to take over ownership and maintain, and, and maintenance on these same properties, which will create an additional drain. People and businesses will move away, as many are threatening now, because they can live less expensively elsewhere. See what's happening in California and New York currently. This will also create more supply, which will drive home prices and revenue down as well. If properties get foreclosed on, they will sell for considerably less than market value. Right off the top, foreclosed properties generally sell for at least 15% less than market value just due to the stigma of being a foreclosure. Then on top of that, the typical deferred maintenance that happened prior to the foreclosure and the lost value is probably closer to 30%. These exorbitant increases are not fair to homeowners who have lived and paid their taxes in their homes for many years and who may not receive the benefit from any gain in value increases for many more years if they even ever sell. If they die in the home, they have paid all this extra and never received any added benefit. Currently, buyers can afford considerably less do, less home due to interest rates almost tripling and now we are making that even worse by raising property taxes so high. This robs the dream of homeownership for many young people and also puts in jeopardy the future occupancy of larger homes. Do we want a bunch of vacant homes all over town because no one can afford them? Higher property taxes, of course, do not only affect homeowners and business owners. Landlords pass on these property tax increases to their tenants. So some of our folks who struggle the most are bearing most of these increased tax burdens. If you haven't noticed, rental rates have gone up considerably due to tax increases the past couple of years. And I'll add here as well that, that the, the prospect for rental property purchases to make it feasible for landlords to, to make a profit on rental properties has decreased considerably over the past couple of years. So, at the same time, we have an increased demand from renters needing places to live and, and particularly for lower income places, which are becoming harder and harder to provide as costs go up to landlords because they cannot offer a lower-priced home to these people that can't afford these high rents. So we're, that in turn is creating to an increased problem with people on the streets that cannot, can't afford half decent, halfway decent housing. Increased taxes also mean people have less disposable income to spend at local businesses and recreation, which are additional revenue sources and that provide jobs and stability for our local small businesses. And I could keep going about additional negative effects to never-ending increases in taxes, but let's just say that it is unfair and unjust, especially in our current economic climate where people are stretched thin already. We will soon find out the straw that breaks the camel's back. Do we really want to do that to ourselves? So I don't like to just complain without offering suggestions for what we can do to improve the situation. And I also don't pretend to think that you guys haven't considered most of these things and I'm sure taken many into consideration, but here are a few suggestions. One, lower the mill levy more, enough to offset any increased property values for a zero gain until our economy comes back and consider never raising it any higher. Any additional, any added features to the city such as aquatic centers, community centers, ball fields, airports, racetracks, et cetera, from the planning stages on, they need to show that they can be profitable on their own, self-sustaining, without any additional tax money to fund or maintain them. If not, don't do them. Knock them in the head or sell them to private enterprise who may be able to run them profitably. Vacant buildings that haven't sold within a few years and that are becoming a blight, if the owners are not making a productive use of them and have not sold them on their own, the county should force a sale to the highest bidder, even if it's for $1, provided that the proposed purchaser can provide an approved plan for an acceptable use of the property, have their improvements made within, say, two years, and give them a tax vacation for three years after purchase so they can get a healthy start to their business. Then the country, the county can start receiving revenue again on the property rather than letting something like the Holodom, White Lakes, and Ramada get destroyed by the elements and vagrants, becoming a blight that has to be torn down and then the grounds maintained forever by the county, likely to never see another tax dollar generated by them. In other words, giving it to someone that can make a productive use of it would be better than letting it become what so many other buildings have. And I know we have a tax sale procedure, but it seems this process needs streamlined and updated due to what we're seeing. Next, privatize more county functions and put everything up for bid. Renegotiate existing leases on government buildings and anything the county is leasing. Make any raises or bonuses for government departments merit-based tying budgets to measurable outcomes. Consider making cuts to pay, staff, or benefits as any other business would have to do during a crisis. Businesses don't continue to spend beyond their means or they'd be out of business in short order. Consolidate departments or functions, look for any duplication of efforts. I'm sure they are visible somewhere, but the budgets I could find on the county website were very general with little detail. And again, I haven't dug that deep. I'm sure there's probably more detail. You'll tell me. But provide full monthly up-to-date budget visibility for the public online and forgive me if this is available online somewhere. Spend money in smarter ways. For example, all the trees planted along Fairlon Road. They require a lot of maintenance, replacing dead ones, pruning live ones, cleaning up leaves, mowing and trimming around probably takes at least three times longer than it did before when there weren't any trees there. They are so close to the street and sidewalk that they will tear up both their roots, they will tear up both with their roots in the years to come. Fixing potholes is, and I know some of this is a city responsibility, but some is county. Is there better material to put in the potholes that will be longer lasting rather than just cold or hot patch fillers we put in and that pop back out within a few months with the hot potholes just getting bigger and bigger, causing damage to cars, causing wrecks, et cetera? Make the county appraiser an elected position by the public and let we, the people, vote on any property tax increases. And I would just say for the, the people here today, I think we want to draw a line in the sand. We don't want our taxes going up anymore. We're getting taxed to the hilt every which way we go. We've got no money left over at the end of the day and we're gonna drive people away from this county, jobs away, and that's gonna be, we're shooting ourselves in the foot. But thank you, folks. I'm not, I'm not hollering at you. I'm hollering at the collective efforts or lack of by all of us. I know you guys are working hard at this and any of us out here, so I do appreciate your efforts and these are just constructive criticism. I know you guys are working hard at this than any of us out here, so I do appreciate your efforts and these are just constructive criticism.
Hello, can you guys hear me okay, my voice? It doesn't carry, alright, so my name is Amanda Ferguson Poncy. You can hear me? This is as loud as I get.
What's your, what's your address?
Um, it is, uh, seven zero one seven, southwest nineteenth lane. You can't hear me? Okay, is this a little better? It doesn't work. Alright, well, I mean, they're the only ones that really need, can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, Amanda.
Alright, thank you so much, and I just wanted to say thank you guys for allowing us to come in here. I'm new to Kansas, I lived in Missouri my whole life. Um, I've been a huge part of the process, you know, even through high school, making sure to volunteer for, uh, you know, elections and everything, and I really do love the United States in regards to the abilities that, you know, we, the people, so we're able to talk to you guys, though I do feel like some of you guys are a little bored with us, so sorry, hopefully we'll be done soon. Um, but basically, you know, I am new to Topeka and my husband, he is, uh, active duty for six years now. He's Air National Guard, in which case, you know, we were lucky enough to purchase a home with the VA. And unfortunately, I am one of the people who have recently purchased a home that has increased all your guys' values. Now, I'm not quite sure if everyone understands the way that purchasing a home works. So what we're in is we're in a seller's market, which basically means that people who are selling their home can request for however much money they want to, because the amount of homes that are available to purchase is more than the people, or is less than the people who wanna buy them. So basically, um, when we purchased our home with the VA loan, we had to be, everybody had to be like straightforward, the government, everything like that, so we had to see and visualize everything was going on. So basically, whenever, I know that you guys spoke about the fact that, um, you know, like the appraisals don't really, like you, the government doesn't set the appraisals type situation. Well, the thing is, is right after we purchased the home, someone from this, uh, from the state and the city both came out to our property and was wanting to make sure that they can, you know, evaluate the house. I told him that's fine, and then I was like, well, we just recently got it appraised, we just purchased our home, why do you have to do this? Well, he said that the private person who appraises the home when you purchase it, that tells you the value of your home is completely different than what the government does. So they do not coordinate or coordinate at all, I'm sorry, I'm nervous. So basically, you guys trying to tell these individuals that you don't determine how much, um, a home is valued is false, because the value that I received when I purchased my home and two weeks later, you're guessing, you guys are evaluating it for thirty thousand dollars more, which is awesome, because I was able to purchase my home for thirty thousand dollars less. But you guys are stating, now I have to pay thirty thousand dollars more. That's wild to me in regards to taxes. Now, um, we are currently stuck in a recession. I just, I'm in college, I'm doing the accounting, um, getting my accounting associate's, uh, degree, and I just, um, did a, a class over, uh, microeconomics or economics, I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with that, but basically what it is, is it talks about the government, the way that the government budgets everything, and kind of it talks a little bit about how our government goes up and down, like we have recessions, they go back up, so on and so forth. We one hundred percent are in a recession, which basically means we're, we're stuck in this loop. So, me being a homeowner, I just purchased my house, you're now evaluating that I have to pay like hundreds and hundreds of more dollars a month or a year, that's wild to me. Um, and then also, I know that there's all these proposed increases in taxes for like a whole bunch of, like the recreation, public works, so on and so forth. Now, I'm not sure if people are aware, but with the government, for those who don't have any money, which unfortunately was me for most of my life, I had to apply for Pell Grants and stuff like that to help me pay for school. Well, those same types of grants are available for most of these departments that are looking to have us increase, increase some taxes for them. It's almost like you guys are telling the senior citizens, oh, you can go ahead, you can apply for this grant and they'll be able to help you. Well, so can these companies that are like, especially parks and recreation. I literally looked at three different grants that can give them money. One of them was just approved by the actual governor of this state, or I guess, ah, I'm nervous, I'm sorry. But, um, I know that most people who are in their jobs for quite a long time, which is awesome, you guys kinda get stuck and you get stuck in kinda like, oh, I don't wanna worry about that, let's just, let's ask somebody else to pay for it. Well, the government, um, with the United States offers that opportunity, but people just need to take the time and get in there and offer that to each company. Now, I don't know if maybe we need to like change out jobs or just have, you know, people like take a step back and no longer be in a box, but kinda like look at the box from the outside and see everyone's point of view. Perhaps that can make changes, in which case, you know, like everything that you're asking us to tax on, we can lower that. We can find the money, the government, the United States gives people money. So let's have you guys, not you, but you know, the people in regards to, who are looking for these tax increase, do a little bit of the effort themselves, instead of just saying, oh, I need like one million more dollars, let's just tax those people. Well, guess what? You might need one million, but half of it is gonna come to you and then we'll cover the rest of it, because that's what, you know, obviously we have to pay taxes, that's what makes America free, is it doesn't come at free cost. It does come, you know, with us paying things, it comes with the war and so on and so forth. Um, so I just, I want you guys to, to not be so wishy-washy in regards to, oh, we don't do this, but we do do that, when really, most of these people don't know exactly where your guys' evaluations go. Um, so I mean, yeah, I just, I feel like a lot of the money you're asking for is available to you guys at no cost to us. Um, and definitely, I feel like the way that the, um, the seller's market currently is working is not right for the state of Kansas to be like, all these homes are being sold for like thirty, forty, fifty thousand more, so guess what, everybody has to pay the taxes on that. Well, when I purchased my home, I had to pay taxes to you guys. So now you're demanding that I repay taxes for that increase, as well as everybody else to pay taxes. I just feel like that's redundant for the way that we're trying, that we want this country to get out of recession. And so, I hope, uh, I hope my words don't fall on deaf ears and I'm sorry for being nervous and stuff, but I wanna thank you guys for your time tonight. I hope you take into consideration everything that we've been saying, and please vote no so that you don't push good people out of their homes, especially because you are only asking for like the drug court and the safe streets to be the absolute lowest amount of increase in budget that they need. I mean, I feel like if you want us to be able to stay in a home that is worth value, you need to make sure that the people in the community are worth the same value, instead of just saying, oh, I'm only worth that value, so. Alright, well, thank you guys.
How you doing? Good to see you guys again. I'd like to thank you guys for holding this hearing and allowing us to be heard.
Name and address.
My name is John Ethan, I live at sixty-eight forty-nine southeast Barretton Road. And, uh, what I came up to talk about was, uh, some of the valuations have gone up, and I talked to the lady next to me, and I said, my evaluation went from ninety-four thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand. She goes, hold my beer, and she's right there. And, uh, I was like, wow, so in two years, less than two years, my property value has doubled. So that's fifty percent up on my taxes. I'd like to speak about taxes. Taxes equals slavery, and that's the flat-out truth. Because when you take taxes, it is not taken because we volunteer it, like that one guy should that says we should go ahead and spend millions, millions more, whatever, up here at the very beginning. He's more than happy to like give up all the money he has in taxes, because we have to, it is taken at the point of force. If we don't pay our taxes, a sheriff will come knocking on our door and say, here's a little piece of paper that says you didn't pay your taxes. And what is, what's gonna happen then? You're going to be forced out of your home and kicked out, because taxes is slavery. If you earn one hundred dollars and keep that one hundred dollars, you're free. But if you're taxed on that one hundred dollars, uh, property tax, personal property tax on your automobiles, um, income tax, you're sitting there looking at thirty, forty, fifty percent in taxes. Those taxes go where? Now, some of us use the walking trails, some of us don't. I don't think that guy's using any walking trails or using the, uh, public, you know, you know, he's not gonna be swimming. So his tax money that he's paying for is for what? He's at the point of force, which is known as a gun, point of a gun, if he doesn't pay his taxes, he's got to pay them to the county, because somebody says, you've gotta pay for the walking trail. Now, you're a slave to those ideas, which is totally unfair, because we gotta look at what we really need for the county to function and where we really need to spend the money at, versus all these ideas on where we need to go here, there, you know, different trails, the safe streets, twenty thousand here, you know, the millions of dollars that we spend recklessly on these ideas. So if you were to go back in time and ask a guy who was an actual slave, say, Mr. Slave, would you like to be twenty-five percent slave and seventy-five percent that's free? He'd, he'd be upset at you, he'd slap you in the face. Like, well, oh, okay, well, sorry, you know, we raised taxes and we made it fifty percent, you'd be fifty percent plus something. He'd be angry, righteously angry, because make him free or quit messing with him. And that's what we're asking for, is to make us more free by lowering our taxes and allowing us, allowing us to keep more of our money, because we can't afford this. You know, the valuation went up thirteen percent on my property, then you're increasing the, the mill levies across the board. That was already thirteen percent we got kicked in the shin for, on top of this, you know, the mill levies going up. So you're taking the money by force from people who can't afford it, and it's by force. And when people are looking at their bills, I right now pay four hundred and fifty dollars a month in taxes and insurance for my house. And taxes and insurance just for two cars in my house is seven hundred and fifty bucks a month. Seven hundred and fifty, that, that means I have to come up with that, or else I cannot drive legally on the roads or own my property, because I don't actually own my property, because it seems that the state has taken over that role and I rented from them because of the taxes. And how do we, how do we come more free as a people? Because when we, when this place was founded, it was on freedom. And the freedom that we used to have, where did it go? We let it get boated away and taken away piecemeal by piecemeal. Well, there's a lot of people here taking a stand and saying, no. Because we can't afford this taxes, and it's, it's putting people in poverty, especially people who can't afford it on fixed incomes. I mean, I, I make decent money a year, but I'm sitting there looking at my house payment went from seven hundred and twenty-six a month to nine hundred and twenty to pay my taxes and insurance. That's two hundred dollars in just the last year. Some people can't handle that. My stepson, I'm sitting there showing him bills today, I'm like, you can't live on your own, you have to get a roommate. You can't live on your own in Shawnee County or Topeka, because you can't afford this on what you make right now. Because I broke down the bills with him today, because I've been wanting him to move out of my house. He's twenty-two, I'm like, dude, you can't afford this, you need to go get a second job or a third job. And the fact is, is he's like, whoa, oh my god, reality smacked him in the face with a little piece of paper today. That same piece of paper that I got in the mail. So, please look at it and see if you guys can, can whittle some stuff down and make it to where. And the two ideas I have, you need to set a set limit, and if the property values go up and down, that's cool, the market would drive that. That means if we're doing better, you're doing better, if we're doing worse, you're doing worse, we're all in the same boat. And I believe also that people who are over sixty-five that are retired, there should be a system set up that says they don't have to pay any more taxes. If they keep, I mean, because it keeps going up, if income gets fixed at sixty-five, my neighbor's eighty-five, he's going on ninety-five, I'll guarantee you that. So, but he's gotta pay more and more and more and more and more, his income is set. Well, there can be a way, we can find a way. There's a, four billions in excess money, as you said, that the state had, I think we can cut some taxes, thank you.
Uh, hello, my name's Nathaniel Boggs, B-O-G-G-S, I live at one-ten southeast fortieth street. Uh, I think the over sixty-five cohort's been represented pretty well. I like to speak, I like to speak to, um, the perspective of those of us that are younger. Uh, I'm married, I have two small kids, um, and we just managed to buy our first house recently. And I know that people my age, the thing that tempts them to move to a community like this is that it is cheap to live here. Shawnee County and Topeka do not have the culture or nightlife or any other thing that draws people my age and younger here. And the thing that does draw people here is that it is, uh, you know, depending on where you are, relatively safe, it's also relatively cheap, especially compared to cities like Kansas City or Wichita, uh, which do have those sorts of, uh, you know, the culture and nightlife that would be, uh, appealing to people my age. And the increase in taxes will, uh, erase that benefit that we have, right? The incentives that are present, uh, if they go away, people will stop moving here. And that's terrible, I grew up here, uh, my siblings grew up here, uh, we love this place. We were born in Shawnee County, we were raised in Shawnee County, um, and I am happy to raise my kids here. I want to raise my kids here, but if I can't afford to do it, I won't do it. And that hurts, that makes me sad, because I do enjoy this community, I think it's a good thing, and I'd like to see community be strengthened because of it, but I have to do what's best for my family. So that's the perspective of the younger group. Uh, the second thing, and this might echo some of the gentlemen that came before me, uh, but we do have to consider, um, of course, the law of supply and demand. As the price for housing go up, goes up, demand will lessen, less people will move here in general. It's gonna be decreased economic activity, it's not gonna work out. Uh, additionally, the law of unintended consequences. Government policy tends to look at the short term, and I know that you guys may say, oh, we look at the long term, you know, we're projecting over years and that's great, good for you, uh, but in the end, you're looking to the next election, and I understand that's the incentive for you. Uh, however, uh, the, the short-term benefits, uh, that would come from a raise in property taxes may look good in the short term, but in the long term, it's gonna, it's gonna ruin people's lives. People will suffer because of it, and it's not gonna go well. And so the, the short-term benefit certainly does not outweigh long-term cost. Uh, and lastly, and as a reminder, and this is to echo the gentleman that came before me, just because I feel that politicians need to be reminded constantly, that your policies are enforced at the point of a gun. The decision, the decisions you make are enforced by a threat of violence. If we don't go along with it, then these nice gentlemen that are holding the doors for us will come to our house and point a gun at us, and we either get on board or we get put in a, put in a box. And I understand that's the deal we make in our society. However, it is something you do need to be aware of and to keep at the forefront of your mind. You do not play, uh, you play with these numbers and we have these decisions, but in the end, the root of your power, the root of any government's power is the ability to project force and the ability to point a gun at someone and say, you either do it or we'll see what happens. Now, this is not to be a criticism that you guys aren't considering this or anything, it's just, I do think that politicians need to be reminded of that, because it's a big deal. A good portion of the happiness of our lives is in your hands, and you need to be cognizant of that. And again, not saying that you're not, but you do need to be reminded of it, thank you.
My name's Larry Miller, I live at eight oh eight northeast forty-third street. I just don't understand, two years ago, your budget was a hundred and eighteen million, now you're asking for a hundred and forty million. What has gone up that damn much? And I pay thirteen dollars a day, um, a day to live in my house. Uh, I, I, it ain't my fault, I've, ten years ago, 10 years ago, I had a fire and I was paying $1,800 taxes, now I'm paying $4,300. And that's hard to do on Social Security. So I think you ought to look at some things. Thank you.
Can you break down the sales tax, how it proportioned to state, county?
We haven't broken it, I don't think we do.
I can look it up real quick.
While you're doing that, probably I'm one of the last ones to speak, and...
But I'd like it a lot better if you give me your name and address first.
Oh, yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe. Mel Adams, I live at 1115 Red Oaks Place, that's about on 10th and Yerish, over there on the west side. We're just barely in the county, barely out of the county, so we're close. But we're having a real nice neighborhood over there. And I want to thank the commissioners for all the things that they've done, especially Bill, he helped us out a lot when we needed to have our roads paved, so I want to thank him for that. Now, the rest of you, we all don't want to pay any more taxes. I mean, I've been here 12 years now, and I came from Hayes, and it's gone up every year. I mean, it has not stopped. And we've got the worst roads, in my opinion, in the state. I call it pothole city because of the potholes that we have, but that's another issue that the county don't have any issue to do with. But the big factor that none of us have talked about is the elephant in the room. The elephant in the room is we've got a president that from the day he was in there started cutting off our oil and causing inflation. And all of us are... That we are all, they have to suffer for, for what they're doing. They're trying to do their best. I heard they have people that they can't hire because they can't afford the salaries, because they can't have a competitive salary, so that's a problem. They've got a problem. We've got a problem, because we can't pay, we can't afford anymore. I mean, we live on a fixed income, so everybody's got the same problem. But it all started two years ago, in my opinion, and it's been getting worse every cent. It's called trickle-down economics, if you want to put the B-word in there, it's something else. Everybody knows what it's called. It's causing everybody 15%. He said, where did all that increase come from? Everything's gone up 15%, just about. You know, you can't go grocery store, you can't go anywhere and buy anything. You can't go, well, here it was, I just watched, I went to Sam's yesterday, almost $4 a gallon at Sam's, Sam's Club. I mean, we're being penny to death here. We're being inflation to death, and it's all coming down from what he calls Biden and Norm's, all I said. I mean, so we've got to give everybody a little bit of grace here. They've got problems, we've got problems, everybody's got problems. So we've got to figure out some way here, the likes of what one guy said, if you can't afford any more money, if you can't afford to buy it, don't buy it. Well, don't do it. Well, that's a very, very simple way to get about it. So I want to thank you guys for what you are doing and for having this meeting. I've learned a lot, and it's been very informative, so thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Oh, here, we got Carol. All right.
My name is Carol Marple, I live at 10249 Southwest Wanamaker Road. And first of all, I'd like to say that as one senior citizen's discount, I'd like to qualify for no taxes. Every one of my taxes went up except for an acre and a half, that stayed the same. But I want to, I agree with most of what was said here. I want to make three specific comments. First of all, citizen input, getting people from within the county to come look at departments, I think it's an excellent idea, but numbers don't work. You have to be in the departments. It's same way with my farm. I can provide you with all the numbers you want, but you need to actually come out and see how it works. And that's the way it is with these departments. The numbers are not the telling factor. Nobody has talked about the $32 million that we have in excess carryover funds. Each and every one of us paid this. I'm not saying we take a large amount, but I don't think it would hurt to kick in a million or two to the budget. I think that's a very workable situation, and still we would have excess funds. I did look at the preliminary budget that was passed out to us. I found it extremely interesting, there are some excellent departments here, but you know, the only department that received extra money from the county commissioners was the Stormont Vale Event Center. Now, I think we just paid $42 million to fix it. We give them the bed tax every year they have for the last at least three years, but we're going to kick in an extra $25,000 to them. They're the only ones that got extra money. Every other, every other department stayed flat or they had their budget reduced. And I kind of think they're supposed to generate a profit, so... Thank you.
Yeah, I'll speak to that. That 25,000, that was not in their original budget request, but that is to fix the bathrooms in Ag Hall. They had requested 100, well, they didn't actually request it, but it was brought up, the bathrooms need about $175,000 worth of repair. And we knocked it down to 25,000 to basically just keep it operational until we can figure out what we're going to do with that building.
Can I make this a moment for Carol?
Please.
I don't understand how...
Carol, Carol, I can't get you, I can't get you, I don't, I'm sorry. At least you have to be on the microphone.
Sorry, sorry. I didn't understand, and I don't think there was a good answer. I don't know how any manager can miscalculate the amount of insurance that is due in their department, the large amount. I mean, we could all miss it by 100 or 1,000 or something, but wasn't it somewhere about 80,000? I think that's not a very good sign of management.
Ms. Beck, do you want to tell us how we missed it by a million dollars on day one?
Yes, we don't get, we do not, we start our evaluation for our, for the next year's insurance in September, that, so we, and our brokers go out for bid, and I think Commissioner may have made a comment that there's, nobody wants, nobody wants to insure municipalities, nobody wants to. There's, so by the time we get around to, they get, they got all of their bids and everything, we've always, we have always since, since I've been here, all of the insurance renewals are done in December, because we are January, our start's in January 1st. There's, and there's, this year was, this last year was an exceptionally bad year. We had one, we had an insurance company two years ago that gave us a, pretty much a flat bid for our insurance. The next year, they said, we don't want to have, we don't want to insure them again, and our broker said, you have to stay with them one more year, because they, you know, you cannot just be in and jump out of the pool. So they made them stay two years, that then, so we got kind of a buy that year. The third year, we ended up, all of our rates have gone up, have gone up tremendously, but nobody knew. I mean, we just, we did not know. We weren't prepared, no one was prepared for it.
Was there other buildings or that went up?
Oh, yes, all across the county, everything went up.
As large as that one?
Yes, we had a $1 million increase in property insurance from 2022 to 2023.
And, and, you know, in the defense of, for the county, we were one of the, we were one of the last, we're one of the last counties in the state that have seen, at least of our size, that has seen this kind of a, of a price increase. There, some of the other larger counties had seen these the year before. I mean, we, like I said, it didn't make a difference, we still have to pay it, but we did get a little bit of a, by having, by keeping that other insurance company for one more year, we got it. But it still didn't happen, you know, we still have to pay it, and, but it was every, straight across the board. It wasn't just the Stormont Vale Event Center.
But I still believe that we are being nickelled and dined by the Stormont Vale Event Center, and if they are responsible for Heritage Hall, we should have taken some of the millions of dollars and spent a little bit there.
Okay, ma'am, if you want to talk, you can come up to the podium. I'm sorry, but...
Karen Tyson, and thank you for hearing us this evening, I appreciate you guys. Okay, I appreciate you guys very much. I know this is difficult, but it's great. It is what the process is supposed to be. But there's been a few misstatements this evening, and I'd like to correct some of those. In the beginning of the meeting, it was stated that this is not a tax increase, because the mill levies are going to go down. Well, let me tell you, that's why we have the revenue neutral rate legislation, and it should have been named Keeping Property Taxes Level, not, so that people understand it. We, I literally sat in a meeting, and one of my county commissioners said, I didn't raise your property taxes this year. And we looked at him, and he says, well, I lowered the mill levy. Well, I leaned back and crossed my arms, and he knew what I was thinking, but somebody else yelled it, we're writing a bigger check. So the confusion was, who's raising my property taxes and why? And this is why we have these meetings. You were able to put out a budget, you're able to defend what you're going to do, but it is very misleading to say that the mill levy is going to be lowered and therefore not a property tax increase. Because the only way that some people will not see a property tax increase is if the good commissioners vote no this evening on a revenue neutral rate amendment, resolution, what you will be voting on. And I do have to commend the county clerk here, she changed the title of the form, and it said, proposed property tax increases. Last year, it's only been in place for two years, the letter's going out. She said they, they had ad valorem, and most people didn't know what that was about. So thank you for hearing us, and literally, I was at a meeting in Miami County, the undersheriff from another county was speaking and demonstrating how many people are losing their homes because of their property taxes. This is not figurative anymore, it's not, it is literal. They are deciding between food, medicine, and property taxes, and we have to do something about it. I look forward to working with the commissioners and solving these problems. We've been trying, and we will continue on that effort. Another item that was stated this evening was the county can't increase sales tax. Somebody looked up, the county is currently at 1.35. Can you confirm that, the clerk?
I, we'd have to ask, I don't know what a charge of sales tax.
So they do have, there is a state statute that allows every county to have sales tax, and it allows every city to have sales tax. Some counties are at the max, some are not, and you'll just have to figure out where you're at. You can always come to the legislature for sales tax, too. And usually those fly by, and they're a vote of the people. The people would vote on whether that sales tax goes on or not. So I hear you, taxes are tremendously high in Kansas, and I'm asking tonight that you guys vote no on increasing taxes. We understand that infrastructure is critical, law enforcement, the good sheriff and all his staff that were here this evening, they do a great job in Shawnee County, and I know how important it is. But I ask that you consider and hear, one lady in here, her taxes, she just bought the house, going to go up 430 some dollars a year. That's just one person. I can give you so many other examples, and these aren't valuation increases, these are tax increases. So I ask that you guys vote no this evening, and thank you again for all your work and for hearing us. I have always supported the LAVTR, but the problem with it is, before I was in the legislature for over 20 years, LAVTR has not been funded by the state. So the reality is, are we going to get it? Probably not. So what I have recommended, and this is controversial to some, but the state collects one and a half mil. It is approximately equal to the LAVTR amount. If we would get rid of that one and a half mil and have them come to the state, state budget, like everybody else, and get rid of that one and a half mil, that would be a tax decrease for everyone, and that would be approximately equal to the LAVTR. It would remove it on your personal property, your real estate, your vehicles, one and a half mil. So let's, let's solve the problem and get it done.
Okay.
Yes.
So a couple things. The LAVTR is a portion, which I think it was last at like $54 million statewide, and it's allocated per county based on their population. So that would be about $3 million for Shawnee County, based on last year's numbers. There's also the city and county revenue sharing fund, which would be really the lion's share, it's 5.2 million is what we would have gotten last year. And I, how come, I never hear anybody talk about that one at the state level?
No, they are talked about, and the amendments are ran on the floor, and they get voted down. The first time I voted on that, I was a freshman in the House, consistently. It just is not the will of the majority of the body for the LAVTR money. So the reality is, in fact, most counties and cities received much more than the LAVTR in COVID money, correct?
I mean, I don't know.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, we did.
I know you did. But you're still asking for even more. So how much is enough? How much is enough as a taxpayer?
Isn't that on the state statutes to pay that?
Every year, they repeal that law.
They repeal it every year.
So it's not that they're breaking the law.
And then you guys sit under the dome and say, you know, local people need, we need to lower the tax, you're, you're sitting on the answer over there.
Yeah, I'm sitting on the answer right here, your budget.
No, no.
No, I'm serious.
I disagree.
So that's respectfully, your, your budget in, I've got it, here in 2022, in fact, you heard one gentleman say it, what you handed out tonight was interesting, because it was a 2024 budget, and it was what was proposed, but it didn't give a comparison as to the 22, 23 budgets, as to where the actual increases are. I do this all the time in the legislature, too. You've got to look at the full picture.
Senator, I think you did.
And $3 million out of, you're asking for $3 million out of a $140 million budget. But I'm telling you that you're increasing over 13 million, so LAVTR does not solve your problem. Does it assist you?
It's part of it.
It would help you, but I've always voted for it, I've always supported it, I just, we just don't have a majority that do.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Senator, while you're on the Capitol and looking at different things to help local government, and I can tell from today's comments, you do care about local government.
I care, I want to see if the process works.
Can you look at some of the things that the state does to push unfunded mandates down to the county? There's a lot of things that the state requires counties to do that, provide... There's a lot of things that the state requires counties to do that provided no funding for. Whether it's appointing counsel for people that are accused of crimes, representing children on foster care cases. All of those things, those attorneys are paid for by the local government. We have mandates that are forced upon us for everything from mental health to public works that the state requires us to do that aren't funded for by the state. So if you could, just over the next session, look at those unfunded mandates because those directly feed in to the increase in our expenses.
Absolutely. And would you provide a list of anything that you can? I'd be glad to look at it. And I think there's some duplication of funding going on and efforts going on. I look that you guys are paying court salaries. Well, the state pays salaries too. So is there a duplicate of that money? We need to make sure that there's not overlap also. So I'll absolutely be glad to work on it. But you guys know, my main focus is taxes and in order to address the appraisal process, very complicated. So we've proposed a constitutional amendment to limit valuation increases. Thank you.
And just to clarify on the, on the sales tax, there is, there are countywide sales taxes. Those do not go to our general fund. Part of it goes to the Gage Park Improvement Authority. Part of it, it was voted, it was a half cent sales tax that was voted on a few years ago for specific infrastructure projects, the Stormont Valley Event Center and Economic Development. Funds go to Pica. And then Washburn has, I believe, 0.65% that is outlined for them in state law. And so that goes directly to Washburn. It's in statute. Everything else is voted on by the voters and it's, it's allocated. It does not go to our general fund at all. I mean, I, I don't know. I suppose that we could put a sales tax measure on the ballot for general fund expenditures, but I don't think, I don't, I don't know that anybody would want it, you know? I mean, quite frankly, so, I mean, I, I guess we could ask and see, but I, I just don't know that the, the people would want to vote for it, so.
Well, by the way, I am for rail.
Okay. A lot of those are grant funded as well.
Is there anybody else that wish to speak?
David Weber. I live at 6540 Southwest 69th Street. Speaking back, as the commissioners have heard, regarding the valuation of property and things like that. I know that I bought my house, we're out in the country. There's not a lot around us, just a little bit down from Washburn rural. When I bought my house in 2019, August of, of 2019, we were valued at $177,000. In 2020, it increased minutely to 188,000, which was what I bought it for, so I wasn't concerned. Since then, I have increased currently, for this current year, I am at $242,000 for that valuation. And as of, and the proposal for 2024, which I just looked up, is $272,000 for the valuation of that property. That's also, that's hit me pretty hard. When, I own six acres with, with that, with the house. So that's house property or house and land. The land is undeveloped, a lot of trees, has a creek bordering it. I haven't done any improvements to the property whatsoever. When I bought the house, the house had been basically unattended to for 20 years by the, the previous owners. There were no upgrades done to the house. I've poured a lot of money into the inter, interior of the house, flooring, painting, doing, you know, upgrades to as I can. But my question every year has been, you know, why is it, why is it keep going up? I mean, it's not worth that much, you know, as far as I can see. You know, you look at the house, I'm doing what I can. But when I first started the payments, it was $1,400 a month, a little over 1438. This year, at the beginning of the year, I ended up getting a, just out of the blue, an increase in my house payment to over $2,000 a month. I was able to get that. A lot of that had to do with escrow payback. The mortgage company had basically paid the taxes for me. I'm paying just under $4,000 a year in taxes, which was a, a large increase from the 2,800 that I had been paying when I first bought the house. Some of that was due to insurance rates going up, which, you know, is understandable, but currently, and then, then I was able to get that reduced by $200 by simply extending the repayment of my escrow loan out to 24 months. Well, if we increase taxes again and my taxes go up, then I'm still sitting down in the hole. I've, I haven't gained anything. I was able to, to reduce my insurance rate a lot, but still, it's going to, I'm going to sit in escrow debt for years. And it's just, it's, you know, it's kind of, I get, you know, I get a decent income. I'm a disabled vet, so that plays into part of my income level every month. But then again, you know, I'm a dual income house and so, and my wife's income helps pay for the bills that, where I'm paying for everything else. Well, she's fixing to have surgery on Wednesday and she'll be out for three months and I'm starting to try to figure out where I'm going to be coming up with money for house payments. It just, I'm just, you know, coming here to let you guys know that it hurts. It hurts when, when things go up and we're over here scrambling and my wages haven't gone up that much. I mean, I earn 24, uh, $24 an hour, you know, so, you know, it's like wages stay the same, my, my expenses go up and then I'm stuck. And it just, it, you know, so if, if I, if there was any urging that I could do as a citizen of this county, you know, and I love Kansas, I love Shawnee County. You know, we moved to south, south of Topeka because it was quiet. We live on a gravel road. We love being able to see the stars at night. It just, it just hurts. And anyway, that's all I had to say. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, commissioners. I am Tom Beardmark. I live at 1028 Southwest Wayne Avenue, close to Bobo's, walking distance. I envy, not envy, I, I understand what you are going through. I used to be on the Leander City Council in Leander, Texas, and I moved here 20 years ago to this little 900 square foot cottage. It's nice. I like it a lot. It has wood floors that talk to me when I walk on it. And I have a basement where my master bedroom is, and when it's as hot as this, it's always cool. So I love Topeka. I chose to move here. But for me, this appraisal, $18,000 from last year to this year, $18,000. That's a lot of money for a person who is retired, living on fixed income and social security. And, you know, I don't want to have to leave my house. It owns me. And it has character. So I don't know what can be done, but something has to be considered. We've heard it from so many other people. I understand that the expenses to the county go up. Guess what? Everything does. You have obligations, you have loans you have to pay off, and so do I. So, you know, I, I, you were put into the commission because people believe in you, you know what you're doing. And if you put your heads together, I'm sure that you can come up with a solution. And if it involves having other citizens working alongside you, not against you, alongside you, then surely we can accomplish it. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Eva Gentry. I live at 3731 Southwest Canterbury Town Road in Topeka, out by Lake Sherwood. And we've only lived there for about five years. We, I grew up and lived in Rossville all the rest of the years. I'm not retired yet and my husband's not retired yet, but we're working on it. He's planning on retiring in two and a half years, hopefully. But the way the economy is going, he may have to retire and get another job, just to keep us paying our bills. Couple of things I just want some clarity on, and that is, one, there's a rumor of a new aquatic center going in. Is that something that's in the plans?
That's not part of the taxes increase. That is part of, we took out new debt in this year, 2023, of $10 million to look at the replacement of the pool in Oakland that had been there since 1965. We're also looking at phase one of Family Park at 29th and Yurish, which would add more pickleball courts to Shawnee County and other amenities in that area, not just pickleball, but then looking at improvements to the baseball diamonds in Dornwood and also to reception hall in the Ward Mead Park. But that's not part of the taxes that are here.
Well, basically, it, it is in a sense. Okay, and so then my next question that I need clarification on because I am not real sure is, you guys said you give money to Safe Street.
Yes.
Correct? So businesses that are a part of that, they also help fund that, right?
Yes.
Okay, so I guess the point I want to make, I spent four years on the city council in Rossville, Kansas, and granted, it was much smaller scale, but I also know that we were responsible to make decisions for our town and the best things, but one of the important things is I listened to my constituents who voted me into that spot. So it wasn't always what I wanted. It was what the majority of the people that came to me wanted. So, and I also know that sometimes there are, there's always ways to cut in your budget. And it may be a temporary cut or whatever. It may be putting something off that we want to, you know, contribute to, but doing it at a different time when things get better economically. I've heard several people mention different things, you know, like your utility bills, insurance goes up, insurance don't want to pay out, but it still goes up. We're still paying for it and all this stuff that you have to have, you know, just to get by. And yeah, we're just getting crushed. And two years ago, I felt like we were sitting pretty good to head into retirement, but now it's like, oh my gosh, are we going to be able to make it? I don't know. And so that, I just ask that you, I know that, that there are ways you can cut. There always is. And if there's, and like Safe Street, I bring that up because I know that businesses participate in it too. Maybe if we used our, we provided our sheriffs to help out and, and do stuff like that in place of financial monetary contributions, at least for now. There may be a time that we have some excess, then you can add, you know, give it to them. And the same with, you know, some of other people had mentioned, like the Stormont Valley Event Center, places like that who should be able to generate enough income to keep, you know, everything up without counting on the county or the state. So I just ask that our voices be heard and that you will consider everything that's been said and that you will vote no. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Yes, you have, you do have to come up. Sorry. Don't want to make you nervous.
You're fine. So I didn't know whatever she was talking about, about you guys trying to get like a, a new center for whatever she just said, but why are we going to be building that if the Y, like the largest YMCA that was actually closer to the Washburn Rural School District is shut down? Isn't that a nonprofit organization that you guys have shut down? So why, why would we be building something new?
We, we didn't shut that down.
The pool is in Oakland and the YWCA is in Washburn rural area.
Yeah.
Two different separate parts of the town.
Okay, so, but why would we need to pay, like you're saying it's not there yet, but I know that it's eventually going to be part of like the tax and proposed increase. So why would we want that to happen if there's things already built here for the, for people to enjoy? Why, why shouldn't we keep up with those kinds of programs and those buildings instead of charging people more money to build something new and shiny? I don't understand.
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, I think, yeah, we're replacing an old pool that's, that's there now. So, I mean, it's, it's currently in existence. It's just in really bad shape.
Okay.
So we're tearing out the old one and putting in a new one, basically.
Yeah, well, why wouldn't you do something like another, like nonprofit organization? Like if you're replacing it, then why not get something in there that is beneficial to everybody instead of just replacing something that's there that's going to cost more money? Like, does that make sense? I think you know.
I guess, I, I mean, our, our pools are open to anybody who wants to go to them.
Yeah, absolutely. But I'm just saying like, why, why add on all this extra burden financially to make something shiny and new? If there's other things in there that's being shut down, that could counteract, so. No, they're, they're shutting the Y down.
Well, they, they've been talking about that, but we don't own the Y.
Yeah.
And I, I, I don't want to speak to their business, honestly, so.
Yeah, no, well, I'm just, like, I'm giving it as an example. I'm utilizing it as an example, like a nonprofit facility versus us paying taxes. I'm just, I don't know. I'm just literally trying to understand.
Wanted to take on the Oakland pool, I would let them. Any of them, any of the pool.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I, I just wanted to make one last little statement here. There's a lot of people who, who dig into your, your property tax. Schools probably get as much or more than we do. And then you have, of course, the city of Topeka, you have a lot of townships. You have the airport, now Gage Park. airport, now Gage Park. So, we're, we're not the only ones that make decisions on, on how much your property tax is. It, that's spread around quite a bit, so. I know you guys coming here tonight, and that, we appreciate your coming out and giving us your opinions and your thoughts, but just wanna let you know, there's other people out there digging at these same dollars, so.
That's schools being right now.
They are. Yep, well, there you go. I think we have to vote to end the meeting.
Vote to close the public hearing.
Okay, I'm gonna move that we...
R and R. Close the R and R hearing.
I can't hear you.
Closing the R and R hearing.
Okay.
Motion to close the R and R hearing.
Thank you with the barriers. Motion's been made by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Mays. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries 3-0. Make a motion that we reopen the meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Rippon, seconded by Commissioner Cook. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries 3-0. Now, we need to make...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Given statements made by members of the public regarding the statute for the revenue-neutral rate, I make a motion that Shawnee County will be exceeding the revenue-neutral rate that has been posted for the 2024 budget. I'm sorry, Senator, Shawnee County will be exceeding the revenue-neutral rate for 2024's budget.
Unless, unless we modify our budget tonight.
And make it less. Oh, well.
We're not approving the budget tonight.
We are not approving.
We're not approving it. So, I thought we did this weeks ago, or months ago, when we, we voted to...
Set this here.
You did. We did?
We gave notice that we would be potentially exceeding the revenue-neutral rate, which is what triggered the notice to the public for today's hearing. And so, we have a preliminary budget that has not been finalized, we have a preliminary budget that was published for the public's review and input, which is what happened tonight, but we have, we have not adopted a final budget for 2024 yet. So, we have not exceeded the revenue-neutral rate with a preliminary budget because it's not been finalized.
So, even if we vote to say we're going over the revenue rate, we can still lower it?
Yes.
All right.
And so, I had made the motion to exceed the revenue-neutral rate, but again, that budget has not been finalized.
That's correct. I'll second that. There you have it. Motion's been made by Commissioner Cook, seconded by Commissioner Rippon. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion...
To record a vote, each one has to record a vote.
Individually.
Individually.
Roll call.
Roll call vote. Commissioner Mays?
Aye.
Commissioner Cook?
Aye.
Commissioner Rippon? Aye. Motion carries 3-0.
And it is my opinion, just to state for the record, that's what you will do when you adopt the final budget, you will do a roll call to comply with the statute. But we're doing this tonight to make sure that, in abundance of caution, it has been done.
All right. I would then move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Rippon, seconded by Commissioner Eric Cook. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries 3-0. We're adjourned.